I make that motion.
All right, have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? Here and then, I'll start the vote with Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. McCollum.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask each of you to certify that we spoke about what we went into closed session, whereas the Carroll County Board of Supervisors conveyed a closed session, this date presented in affirmative recorded vote, and on the motion to close the meeting, in accordance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas sections 2.2-3711, under A1 and A8 of the Code of Virginia, requires a certification by the Board of Supervisors at which such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawful exempt from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was conveyed, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies. I'll start the certification with Mr. Early.
I so certify.
Mr. Collins.
I so certify.
Mr. Hill.
I so certify.
Mr. McCollum.
I so certify.
Mr. Dixon.
I so certify.
And I so certify. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to before Section 3, before the USDA bond refinance resolution, to put committee appointments in there. Have a second on that?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? I'll start the vote with Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. McCollum.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So at this time, I entertain a motion for approval of a committee appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion and we appoint Mary Coulson to the Mount Rogers Community Service Board.
All right. I have a motion for Ms. Coulson, the Mount Rogers Community Service Board. Have a second?
Second.
All right. Have a motion, a second. Are there any discussions? Start the vote with Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. McCollum.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
And I vote yes. At this time, are there any other committee appointments for discussion? All right. Here and then, we'll move on with the agenda. Before we have the USDA bond refinancing resolution, Mr. Davenport would like to speak to us for a quick moment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of Davenport, so unfortunately, Mr. Davenport left us about 160 years ago, and so.
I'm reading shorthand here.
Well, I'm gonna be very, very brief. I was here, of course, last go around. Nothing has changed, other than I indicated that if we were to wait until basically another six weeks, if rates moved against us by just 14 basis points, we would have gained nothing by waiting. Unfortunately, or fortunately, the rates have moved over 20 basis points. So if we keep waiting, we'll be even bigger losers. So this recommendation and the resolution you have tonight is a bird in the hand is worth perhaps more than two in the bush, because bottom line is rates are moving against us. The Federal Reserve did what they did last week, and they keep wanting to do that. So with everything uncertain, we're just gonna recommend that you approve the resolution. This is required, as I mentioned. Tomorrow night is the IDA, the EDA, tomorrow night, and then, and a little bit later, the 12th of April is the School Board. They do their thing, and then we are able to close shortly thereafter. So thankfully, your county attorney is also tied into the bond council, and Steve and I know each other very well, so any technical legal questions, I'm gonna defer to Steve as in both roles, but otherwise, needless to say, as I said last go around, we are delighted. This is a very good result, and I think we caught just the right time before these rates, well, not before, the rates have started to move. This email, and hopefully, we get through the goal line with your blessing. So that's all I have to say, I don't know.
Thanks, David. Mr. Chairman, you have before you the resolution which essentially approves the documents, the ground lease, the lease agreement, the bond purchase agreement, and the assignment agreement, along with the specimen bond, authorizes the necessary county officers to provide their endorsement to move forward with closing on the refinancing. So it would be our recommendation to approve the resolution. As far as final preparations, we're getting very close. I, myself, have been working on the update to the title work that the lender has requested. I was in the clerk's office on Friday finishing that up, or getting close to finishing that up. There's one or two additional items I need to print out, but we're in good shape to move forward for the closing.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the USDA bond refinance and resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I make so motion.
All right. You have a second?
Second.
All right, are there any discussions? Here and then, I'll start the vote with Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. McCollum.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Early.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the revised budget calendar. Mr. Watson, are there any of these in here that have changed, other than the 422, as the last advertisement?
Yes, I mean, I believe they're all the same. The reason why these are changed is due to the advertising requirements. So we did make these changes on this revised budget in order to meet statute.
All right. So I entertain a motion to approve the revised budget calendar?
So moved.
All right. Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Are there any discussions? Here and then, I'll start the vote with Mr. McCollum.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda, school board budget presentation. Dr. Burnett?
Mr. Chairman, before they do that, I have a statement I need to read.
Okay.
Today's discussion involves county budget, and discussion may include funding for Carroll County School Board. As many of you know, I have a position of employment with the Carroll County School Board. With regard to the proposed funding of the school board, the proposed funding would affect the entire school system generally, and not myself individually, and as a consequence, I'm a member of a group of three or more individuals who are employed with the Carroll County School Board, similarly affected by the decision of the proposed funding. Therefore, in this situation, the exception to the Virginia State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3112B1, applies to this situation. In compliance with that section, I hereby declare that I am able to participate in this discussion and voting on this topic fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Collins. All right. Dr. Burnett? Apologize for that.
Well, good afternoon, gentlemen, and good evening, I guess it's probably better turned. I saw Ms. Vass here earlier, and I thought she was here to twist Mr. Martin's ear in case he got out of line. Thanks. He's prone to getting out of line, on occasion.
She probably knows enough on us all, she could keep us all in line.
Yeah. You wanna give the justice? Appreciate the opportunity, guys, giving us to speak and share a little bit about our budget process this year. Just to give you a brief overview of what our goals are, many of those remain the same. Of course, you know what we all have gone through the past couple of years, and trying to provide that extra support to students, to take care of an aging bus fleet, try and maintain equitable salaries, and take care of our buildings. Best ability that we can. So those are pretty much our goals for the year. We did have some challenges. COVID-19 has affected us all, and it's affected our younger kids probably more than anyone. There's a whole lot of learning loss that's going on right now that we're challenged to help recover, and it's no small task. We're seeing kids that are, you know, maybe functioning one to two years behind where they should be, especially with our young children. Our state provided a 5% salary increase for SOQ positions only. Those are standard quality positions, and those are basically certain teaching positions and certain administrative positions. It doesn't cover everything. The increase in minimum wage, of course, increased cost in fuel, tires, everything we're buying is just astronomical right now. You guys are feeling the same pinch we are there. Shrinking workforce, locality, health insurance increases. We've been fortunate, last year, that we didn't receive an increase, actually got a rebate, and this year, I think they're making up for it. So it is with a 10.3% increase. Difficulty in finding specialized teaching positions. If you all know of any speech pathologists, or psychologists, or math teachers out there, please call me. We have beat the bushes, we've advertised in trade journals and everything, trying to find people. We have a lot of increased needs in special populations, speech disabilities, just about everything. And one thing that we're noticing a lot this year is a big increase in students that have social, emotional needs and mental health issues. It's something that's really came to the forefront this year. And then again, our last challenge is to continue with our bus fleet replacement schedule. We've been able to do about five buses a year for three years now, Tammy. There's just some statements that talk about what the education's been like in the pandemic, how it's affected us as a nation. Of course, with the, you know, the inflation rate, and gas prices jumping and all, it's just been a crazy time to do anything. So coming asking for money from anyone is a very difficult task for us, and it's a difficult task for you guys. So this is kind of what our revenue projections look like for next year, and these are, I'll just be honest with you, these are our best guestimates right now. These are based upon what we pulled out of both House and Senate versions of the bills, and as you know, they took a couple of weeks off and won't reconvene until April 4th to finally make a decision on what this budget will actually look like. So, you know, this is our best estimate. The one thing that you'll see is the increase in federal revenue. That's a huge increase, and that's our COVID money. That's the money that we received from COVID, and it's all earmarked for capital improvement projects. So... A general public looking at that's gonna say, wow, you know, y'all had a windfall, but that's not the case. That money is one-time funding, and it's there, and it's gonna be gone. Just to give you an idea of what we spent our ESER funding on, or what we're spending it on, these are all capital improvement projects, projects that we won't come asking you guys to pay for in the future. We've been able to replace a boiler at CCEC. We're working on the roof of the main building at the high school. Looking to do HVAC replacement at the middle school, roof replacement at Gladesboro, and Laurel both are about to get started here within the next month. Coal-fired boiler replacement at Gladeville and Laurel as well, and Oakland. The one at Oakland's should have been completed by now, but due to some of the supply chain issues, it's not quite ready to be finished. But that's about $3.7 million there. The project that's, the high school renovations and additions, came in at about $6.6 million, and then the ventilation upgrades in that same building are about 676,000, I'm sorry. So this is kind of what our capital improvement, where we spend our money at, is capital improvement. About 20% of that ESER III money went to learning loss, is required to go to learning loss. With that, we've purchased, you know, things from Chromebooks to software programs, to paying teachers to do tutoring, just about anything you think of, extended summer school. So we're using that, trying to use that money wisely. By source, if you look, that federal number's exaggerated. That's really not what it is. It is exaggerated. Personnel cost. We are a... We are a people business. So about 80% of our budget's made up of personnel costs, whether it be benefits, salaries, cost for tutoring, whatever. That's, that's what, that's what our budget is consumed, consumes mostly is by personnel costs. Of course, those numbers don't include the capital improvement. These are categories that the money's coming in. Of course, you can see the largest increases in the facilities. A lot of the money with instruction is, we are budgeting on a 5% raise because that seems to be what the state has pretty much agreed upon, both House and Senate. I think the, the House may be 4% and a $1,000 bonus, but it all works out to about a 5% either way. And from what I gather from some of the delegates, that was kind of a bargaining chip that they were utilizing is to to go, go up to the 5% with the Senate. So we'll see what happens with that. Of course, you'll see the big jump in the facilities. That's, we'll talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. Expenditure by categories. Just trying to show you a little pie chart of what it looks like right now. Per pupil expenditures. Tried to give you some historical numbers on that. From fiscal year 2004 to fiscal year 2020, which is the last data that we've had. A little comparison between local monies and state monies. And you'll see that the gap is closed there about fiscal year 2011. It's about $2,230 between the two entities. And it has expanded over recent years that state monies have gone up and county monies have came down. So that kind of shows just a little bit of historical differences there. You got a letter from me probably last week, two weeks ago, asking about putting $500,000 back in our budget that was removed last year to buy diesel buses. We received a school bus rebate in the amount of $100,000, basically $20,000 per bus to replace buses. What we have to do is we scrap those old buses, we have to drill a hole all the way through the block of the engine, and we'll get a $20,000 rebate for every new bus that we buy based upon that. We would like to maintain that replacement of five buses per year. It's not in our budget. So that's why we're, we were asking for the $500,000 that was removed last year to be put back in. Not necessarily 500,000. Now, you know, it could be a little less just because of the price of the buses.
Could I ask a question there, Dr. Burnett?
Yes, sir.
Is that, you want that as part of this budget or the current budget we're in?
The current budget we're in, I'll tell you the reason why, is we have to order those buses by April 18th. Is that correct, Tammy?
And the cost of the buses, could we get a ballpark of that?
About $105,000. They've gone up about $20,000 over the past four years. It's been a huge increase.
So, so if the board deemed to do it, you know, we could probably get by with 420?
So the 105 is with the, with the...
No, no, when you take 20,000 out, it would reduce it down, what, 85?
It'd be 525 and then you get a hundred dollar, $100,000 rebate, right?
Yep.
425?
Yep.
Okay, I apologize.
No, 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 you're fine.
Okay.
I thought I had another slide up here. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Of course, you all probably, I think, might share with you all the information on our bids, on our building project, that we just voted, our, our board just voted to reject those bids. They came in at a time when it's just not good. I mean, gas prices are at the highest they've ever been in history. Just had gone to war or we about to go to war. There's all the issues surrounding that, so there's so much uncertainty among builders right now. They will not give you a timeline on any kind of steel, any kind of HVAC equipment, electrical equipment. They tell you that they'll give them the price the day they order. And it is so volatile right now that everybody's padding their bids. So don't know, you know, if it'll be better in June, but it can't be any worse. So what we've done is we've scaled our bids down, or scaled our project down to a pretty much bare minimum, where we just add the, the actual physical construction of the classrooms and the auxiliary gym. And everything else goes to the wayside. And, you know, maybe with both that and the potential that prices may come down by a little bit by summer, we hope to see some differences. So that's, that's kind of where we're at with that building project and it sickens me. Makes me, it makes me sick to my stomach because, you know, we, we could do a lot of good with that. We could do some more projects that we've not been able to do. Is it possible you could, is it possible that you could do it in phases maybe? I mean, you start one and maybe later hoping that things will get better, go to the next one? Our biggest problem is we've got to, got until September 2024 to spend all the money. And that's, it's all got to be spent by then or else you give it back. So we were able to, you know, back it up a little bit, we can't back it up much further. And I'm hoping that we'll see some change. Architect seems hopeful on it, but, you know, we just don't know. It's, it's out, you know, it's just up in the air. And I felt that, you know, is it just us, but it's not just us. I read a, the state superintendent sent out a thing from the American Association of School Superintendents. And one of the things in that was that rural school divisions were having a harder time being able to spend their COVID monies than other places because uncertainty on facilities, cost. And that most rural areas were spending their money on facilities because that's what they needed to improve. And that's what they needed to put the bulk of their money, so. Tough, it's, don't know quite where to go with this, but, you know, we're going to try and do what we can do. Anything else from me? I appreciate your time.
Absolutely.
Thank you, guys. Y'all got tough decisions to make, I understand that. But, you know, the one thing that I would say is, you know, we're able to take care of a lot of things that we weren't able to take care of before with the capital improvements. And that's all been due to these SRR funds. I mean, that's stuff that we're not going to have to do, we're not going to have to do any of that. 3.7 million dollar projects based upon use of the COVID money.
Is there a plan if, that if it doesn't work out for the renovation, that you can use it somewhere else?
Our plan would be to do the auxiliary gym, a standalone auxiliary gym.
Would that be combining to hit the school and the field house with nothing?
That's gone. That's all gone now. That was the add-on, the addition, you know. The, the biggest thing with that COVID money is it had to be used to respond, prepare, and I can't think the other word, for pandemic, and that was by adding space and be able to spread kids out further. That's how we justified in our proposal to DOE was how we would spend that money. And so, you know, really, you're expanding to spread kids out and the auxiliary, the hallway didn't, the connecting hallway just didn't do that, didn't meet those requirements. So that's why we added that as an add-on. You know, I hate that. But, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens. And I told you guys when I came here last year that I hoped I wouldn't have to ask for money to do this project. And I had to eat crow. And I'm trying not to eat, I'm trying not to eat crow, is what I guess is what I'm trying to tell you. You know, it's, it's put us all in a tough spot. I never would imagine up $600 some dollars per square foot for a building project. It's ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous. 540 to 6, or 620s, something like that, so it's crazy.
Back, back to the school buses, you, you have to scrap those five buses?
Yeah, you do.
So that means Manor Joyce will not be able to use them to haul hay?
No, he, he can use them to put his hay in, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Just as long as they don't run.
Oh, they don't run, well...
I, I don't know, some of them are rusted out, Ronnie, that they may not hold hay. The floor may collapse on some of them.
I used to load hay on one of his buses.
It wasn't no fun job either, was it?
I'm glad he can't use them to haul hay.
I will say this, though, I, I know most of you probably remember that this accident that happened out on 58 not long ago. Those buses are built like a tank. Because with the impact that that van hit that bus and for... It was a tragic accident, but it could have been worse had that bus not been so solid. So I guess there's a reason they're $105,000. But thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, Dr. Burnett. Moving on down on the agenda, the county budget discussion.
Just to touch on the budget just a moment. All the, we went through it. I believe we're pretty solid on this year's budget, however, I don't think a decision can be made yet. There's a lot of things weighing on the state budget, everything from constitution authors to the school systems budget. That's one of the reasons why we're moving off the budget calendar. It's all fallen on about where we expected. It is going to be a tight budget next year. Extremely tight budget. We've been extremely fortunate this year that, you know, sales tax has done as well as it has and the jail bill has dropped as far as it has. But you're not going to see those for many much years. You're going to see an increase in those over the next, well, increase in the jail bill and then a decrease in sales tax. Just like interest rates, you're going to see them coming to, going up. They're going to continue going up. So refinancing this year was, on that debt is probably one of the best things that we could do. It'll cut off some years of payment and also allow us to save some money in a time. But I don't think you'll be able to do that again, you know, so. Other than that, that's pretty much all I've got to say about the budget. It's not something that we can, we can vote on tonight. I think the budget calendar has it for, I need to look at it. Budget calendar has us discussing on April the 11th. General Assembly, I think, is supposed to go in on April 4th. Hopefully, within that week, they'll be able to make a decision and then we can go ahead and advertise.
Is that all the discussion you have on that, Mr. Watson?
That's all I have.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, at this time, I was going to add to the agenda. Are you going to speak on behalf of the budget or...
I, I just have a question.
Okay.
I keep hearing the school board say that we took 500,000. Could somebody please explain to me that whole deal?
Year before last, when, when we received the CARES money, there was some confusion on who exactly we're supposed to pay for the buses at that fiscal year. I wasn't here during this time when the agreement was discussed. However, the school system had in their budget to buy the buses, okay? Carroll County received CARES funding and allotted part of that money to the school system. And the county's understanding the school buses were to be paid for out of that money that was sent to them. However, in us sending them the money, the invoice came to the county, the county went ahead and paid it. Once we realized that the, it had been paid out of county funds and then turned, and turned, provided that money to the school system, this year, we recuperated our funds that we had oversent to the school system. So according to all the paperwork that we have, it appears that we did it right. It appears that the confusion, there was no agreement, there's, so. The understanding was the CARES money was to go for the things that covered under CARES plus the school buses. And then once we found out there was a mistake made, we met with the school system and determined that we needed to receive that money back that we overpaid. So this year, we went into an agreement that we would take that money back over a 12-year period, so the...
12 months?
Per month, yes, I'm sorry, over 12-month period, yes.
So they're not really out 500,000, are they?
It's all who you ask.
Well, I know, but I keep getting different stories and I'm tired of hearing different stories. I want to know whether or not we actually deprived them of money that was promised to them.
It's not a promise that I made or that I know this board made, yes.
I'm not blaming anybody, I just want to know what, what happened.
From my, I think there was confusion in the buses. However, we did provide them with all the funding last year that we had promised them.
And we did pay for five buses?
And we gave them money for five buses.
But they did not buy buses with them, with that money, is that right?
I'm, I'm assuming that, yes.
Okay.
The confusion was, is we allotted CARES money to pay for the buses, okay? They were under the assumption that the county was going to pay for them out of the existing CARES money that we had. So there's a communication error somewhere in here. And however, from what I have to go on, it shows that the school system should have paid for those buses.
Out of the, out of the CARES money?
Yes.
Right.
That's correct.
And I wish Dr. Burnett were still here so we could ask him, because I understand what you're saying. But I think maybe they still bought buses.
Yes, they bought.
But they spent that money elsewhere.
Yeah, they bought additional buses.
They didn't neglect to buy buses.
Yeah, they, they ordered the buses and when they came in, the invoice came to the county, county paid it. Okay, then we realized that, no, those should have been paid for out of the CARES funding that was approved back in August instead of when they came in. So we realized that we'd taken county funds and paid for the buses when they really should have came out of the CARES money that was given to the school system. But they did buy the bus, we just paid the invoice. It's been a confusing situation since I've been here.
You know, it seems like we're constantly made to be the bad guys here because we took $500,000 from the school, which we really didn't. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And thank you.
There's always a vote at the end of the year and the funding that we provide.
Any more discussion? All right, before we go into, uh, entertain a motion to go back into closed session, uh, for the lack of time, Mr. Early, do you want to, uh, comment on the disaster in your district?
Yeah, I, I do actually thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. As everyone is aware, there was a tornado that touched down in Gladesboro area in my district of Laurel Fork. Uh, I drove out there just as soon as I heard about it and, uh, surveyed the damage. Uh, there was, you know, there were several buildings that were damaged or destroyed, a barn, a couple of houses. Fortunately, through the grace of God, no one was injured or killed. It could have easily been that, uh, perhaps people could have been seriously injured or, or ended up, you know, losing their lives. Unfortunately, that did not happen. I want to thank, uh, all the folks within the county government and the state government that are currently helping and working to try to make ends meet and to get people back on track, because when your house is destroyed, it's obviously hard to go on with living. But our county government and our state, uh, representatives, I think, are doing a, a great job. The day of the incident, I saw Appalachian Power out there clearing the roads. I drove through at eight-thirty in the morning, the roads were open. Uh, I saw news crews, uh, and plenty of people trying to help. I didn't necessarily get out to try to help. I figured I'd be more in the way than anything else, so I just, uh, took a look at it. But the county has provided, I believe, a couple of roll-off dumpsters, uh, one at the, uh, fire station in Laurel Fork and another one, uh, in the Gladesboro community. Uh, also, uh, Gladesboro Elementary was closed for a few days, and I believe it's back open now. But it, towards Thursday and Friday, it was closed as a shelter to provide a place for people to go to, you know, to take a shower or, or have a place where they could at least have a roof over their head. So my, many thanks to all the EMS, state police, local, county police, anybody involved in helping on Thursday and Friday and throughout the weekend, I, I want to thank them. So let's, uh, let's hope that these things don't happen on a regular basis. This storm was a little bit unusual. It could not have been forecasted there was going to be a tornado in that spot. I'm fairly familiar with weather radar, and, and that radar image did not indicate that there was a tornado. So fortunately, people had the forethought to seek shelter. And folks really ought to have an emergency plan within their own home for cases like this where you know where to go. A rally point so you can make sure that everybody is, uh, still there. And, uh, you know, just a little bit of forethought in advance, I think, helped save lives this time, and it will continue to do that in the future. So again, thank you to all for everything you're doing for Gladesboro.
Anybody else have anything to add to that? All right, I'll entertain a motion to enter back in closed session, um, under, I guess it would be A eight?
Yes, it would be, uh, Virginia Code Section two-point-two, thirty-seven-eleven, A eight, consultation with legal counsel concerning specific legal matters requiring, um, the advice of, of counsel. Um, this would be the same closed section topic that we, um, entered in earlier here this afternoon and were unable to get to, uh, and it's, it's regarding, um, legal implications of, uh, certain ordinances for consideration by the board of supervisors.
Okay. I entertain a motion?
So move.
All right, you have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
All right, I'll start the vote with Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
And I vote yes.